It's six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Ms. Hunter, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
All right. We have a full complement, and I'm glad to see everyone's here and healthy once again. Good to see you all. Next is for item for closed session report, for which we have none, and then we'll move on to number four, which is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to do so?
Motion to adopt?
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, passes four zero. Next is our consent calendar. These are routine matters enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion.
Staff has one change to the minutes.
Okay, so we will...
On page six...
Pull the minutes.
We received a call from the person who spoke at the meeting, and they have a correction for their last name. So where it says Cabot, it should be Kevin.
And that is on which page of the minutes?
Page six.
Page six.
Second line in italics.
Okay. So we have a correction. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Any other discussion about the minutes from our previous meeting? That was on January 21st. So can I have a motion, please, to approve the meeting minutes from January 21st, 2025?
Motion.
I have that from Mr. Friend. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lepper. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposition, four zero. Okay. Moving on to number seven. This is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action by the planning commission under specified circumstances. Would anyone from the public like to address the planning commission on something not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to number eight, which is written communications on non-agenda items?
We have none.
We have none. All right. Now, let's move on to number nine. Very interesting. Tonight, we have a special presentation, but not an educational workshop. This is 9.1, recognition and appreciation of Michael Friend, outgoing planning commission member. I will turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, for an introduction from the staff.
So for item 9.1, staff has prepared a resolution for planning commission consideration to recognize Commissioner Friend for his service to the city of Placerville as a planning commissioner between 2001 and 2025. We have two copies of the resolution, one for our leather-bound book and one for you that you can walk away with tonight. Unfortunately, we were not able to get the engraved wood plaque. It's...I just got an email that it's complete now, so I'll have to work with you afterwards. But we do have a certificate of recognition for your service in lieu of that tonight, and some cupcakes to soften that we didn't have it. So staff just wants to wish you the very best moving forward. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to start off our discussion. I have a few words prepared, and I think some other members of the audience are here to address this topic as well, so I'll make this brief. It's been my honor to work with you for over seven years here on the planning commission. Not only are you dedicated commissioner, I've found that you're also an experienced brewer, an avid home gardener, an international traveler, and more recently, a member of our local community theater. All fantastic endeavors, and now that you're going to have a few extra hours on your hands, especially the first and third Tuesdays of each month, I wish you the best of luck and success in all of that, plus anything else that you care to try your hand at. I've really learned a lot, and I've enjoyed my brief time serving with you on this body. I actually could not believe, 25 years, that is a significant contribution. More so, also, I looked at...I saw that you were a chair of this body numerous times, so a lot more responsibility there. So thank you again so much for your hard work and dedication to our community.
Thank you, Madam Chair, those very gracious comments. I'm going to save a few remarks I have until the end of the meeting under commissioner reports, just out of respect for the folks, the applicants that are here and wasn't able to be here last meeting, so...but a few thoughts, reflections that I've had. It has been an interesting 25 years, so thank you very much for that.
Would either of the other commissioners like to say anything at this time?
Just that I wish you all the best. It's been really interesting to work with you, and I've learned a lot, you know, and so thank you for serving so long. Really makes an impact on the city to have such regularity, so I really do appreciate that.
Truthfully, to consider that I have been reappointed six times. I mean, each time you start new, right? I mean, somebody saw something they liked, saw, you know, whatever that was, you know, glad I was able to bring it to the table, so thank you.
Mr. Smith, would you like to say anything at this time?
I'll save it for the end because I look forward to hearing about all those years of experience.
At this time, I'd like to open up to members of the public who'd like to step up to our podium and comment on item 9.1. If you would, please state your name for the record.
Evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Ryan Carter. Speaking tonight, as only a former commissioner and a private citizen, so today we bid...I just typed this out, I did not memorize it, so I apologize for reading. Today, we bid farewell to a man who's not just shaped our policies but has shaped our community. Commissioner Friend is a true defender of our rural lifestyle and a steadfast voice of reason in the ever-complicated world of city planning. I've had the privilege of learning for Michael. I've come to appreciate his ability to navigate the delicate balance between progress and preservation, growth, and history. Beyond technical know-how, what stands out most, excuse me, is his unwavering commitment to protecting what makes our community special. For years, Michael has been the guardian of our city's blueprint, ensuring that every project has a purpose, every sign conforms, every historic district is protected, and that we always have adequate parking. Thank you, Michael. I will miss you at these long and occasionally tedious meetings. It's been a pleasure both knowing and serving with you. May your future be filled with well-planned adventures, perfectly aligned pathways, and most importantly, zero unexpected land use conflicts. Here's to a job well done, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. That was very gracious.
Good evening. If you would, please state your name for the record.
Pierre Yvaz, former planning commissioner, former city councilman, and former city staff. So, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, it's really an honor and a pleasure to be here to say a few words on behalf of...or for Mr. Michael Friend. So people were asking me, why am I all dressed up? Well, there are two reasons why I'm dressed up. One is I have all these nice clothes that I don't have anything...I don't have any place to go or to wear them to, except maybe an occasional wedding or something, so it's nice to be able to put on the old threads, as I used to do when I was a staff person or when I was a planning commissioner or when I was on the council. And then Ryan Carter, councilmember Carter, said, "Well, where's your prop?" Because usually I'll come and have some kind of a prop. Well, I'm wearing the prop. So the second reason why I decided to dress up is for Michael Friend. When I was first appointed to the planning commission in 1999, I think the dress code, the bar for the dress code was set a little low. You know, people weren't...didn't really look the part, and I think there's a decorum when you're representing the city, when you're representing the public. You have the public coming before you. It's sort of a...it's a show of respect and a show for the position that you hold. So, Michael, you were very instrumental in seeing to my effort to get to the commission to raise that dress code bar. You, at the time, I believe you were working for the state, and you'd come in here usually last minute because you were driving from Sacramento, and you'd always have very flamboyant ties, always looking sharp with a nice shirt, coat, and everybody else followed suit, so I was very happy about that. So we served two years together on the planning commission, and I remember those two years fondly. We always had very invigorating discourse with all the different projects that came before us. Michael, you were always well-engaged in detailed discussion, dissecting the projects that came before us, and you did so for 24 years. So you mentioned earlier that, yeah, you were doing a good job, and the council kept appointing you. Well, I was one of those council members back in the day that reappointed you, and I'm proud to have done that. I believe Michael may be the longest person ever serving as a planning commissioner in Placerville history. I have no way of...or we didn't have a way of confirming that, but I don't think there's a commissioner in the history of Placerville who's served longer than you, and I think that's commendable. I wish I had your energy. You're a family man. You held a full-time job with the state emergency services, and you're an accomplished brewer, entrepreneur, and you've won brewing awards, so you're not just some home brewer like I was in a bathtub. You actually have beers that have won awards at these national competitions, so that's quite something. And you made time to serve our city, because this is a difficult position. Michael, I wish to thank you for your dedication and service to the city of Placerville and its residents. It is my honor to call you a colleague, a friend, and a source of good brew. I hope you don't mind me saying this, but when I hear the brand name Samuel Adams Beer, which I'm sure you know about them, I guess they were one of the first craft beers that came out in the 1980s, early 1980s, I think of you because of the slogan. On the bottle, it would say Samuel Adams, Samuel Adams, Brewer Patriot, and that's what you are. You're a brewer and you're a patriot. You serve this city, and you also love your country. You serve your country as well, and I appreciate that. So thank you again for your dedication and service, and I call you Friend not just because of your last name, but because you are a friend. Thank you. Pierre, thank you so much for that. And my ties were my idiom, and I still have my collection, and I worry that about the only time I'll be able to wear them are weddings and funerals. I have some new professional obligations now that'll help, but thank you very much for those kind words. I learned a lot from you, absolutely.
Anyone else from the public like to step up to the podium at this time? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment, and here comes Ms. Hunter. Hot off the press, all right. Okay. It's my honor now to read...I have to look at my...make sure we're doing this in the right order. Yes, I will read...now read this resolution, number 25-01. City of Placerville Planning Commission, resolution of appreciation to Michael A. Friend for his service as planning commission member. Whereas, on February 20th, 2001, Michael Friend was appointed to serve on the Placerville Planning Commission and attended his first meeting, and whereas during his tenure on the planning commission, Michael Friend served as chair of the commission in 2004, 2005, 2006, 2007, 2012, 2018, and 2023. And whereas Michael's technical background and experience, together with his interest in planning and dedication to serving his community, has been of great benefit in representing the residents of Placerville during his years on the planning commission, and whereas Michael held a strong commitment to understand complex planning issues in order to make educated and informed decisions to enhance the environment and quality of life for all residents of the city, and whereas Michael's last term on the planning commission ended on February 18th, 2025, and having left his mark on the city of Placerville. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the planning commission does hereby officially express its sincere thanks, appreciation, and gratitude to Michael Friend for his service on the Placerville Planning Commission on behalf of the residents of the city of Placerville, California. Passed and adopted this day, 18th...this 18th day of February, 2025. This time, I would like a motion to pass this resolution. Have a motion from Mr. Smith? Say that in a...we have a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
A second.
A second from Ms. Lepper. Any further discussion? All right, let's do this on a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? So it passes four zero. At this time, do we want to sign this or at the end of the meeting?
I would prefer, just out of deference to the applicants that are here, if we could do the photos and stuff afterwards, if that's okay.
Do I need to sign this right this minute so it's official?
Add it afterward.
Afterwards? Okay. Very good. Put it over there so I don't put water on...
Hand it to the bailiff.
Okay. We have it in a safe location.
It's safe.
All right. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll now move on to item 10. This is our environmental assessments and public hearings. Really, the work that we have to do tonight. It was very...actually, very pleasant to go down memory lane for a short time for Michael Friend. 10.1 is a conditional use permit, 78-01-R, for a tire shop. This is a consideration of a CUP to operate a tire shop within the building addressed 289 Placerville Drive, and to find the project categorically exempt from CEQA per section 15303. And I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So CUP 78-01-R is a request for the establishment and operation of a tire shop within the building addressed 289 Placerville Drive. The subject application is a revision of the previous approval, CUP 78-01, which was approved February 7th, 1978, to reestablish the automotive sales and service within 289 Placerville Drive. There are a total of three buildings on the subject parcel, addressed 289, 291, 293, and 295 Placerville Drive. The parcel was developed in 1978, including previous planning commission approvals for site plan review 78-03, site plan review 78-20, and CUP 78-01. As described in the staff report, CUP 78-01 allowed for the establishment of automotive sales and service on the parcel within 289 and 291 Placerville Drive. However, 289 Placerville Drive has not operated as an automotive sales or service business since 1979 or the early 80s. There's a little bit of record issues there. Based on staff's analysis of the project included within this staff report, it is the opinion of staff that the proposed expansion of automotive services and sales to the subject building is consistent with the general plan, as the proposed tire shop shall not be detrimental to surrounding uses and will provide an expansion of the commercial sector along Placerville Drive while utilizing a currently vacant building. Further, staff reviewed the previously approved parking plan approved under site plan review 78-20 with respect to existing and proposed uses. The expansion of automotive services as proposed would comply with required onsite parking. Of note, staff did include condition of approval number two to require the property owner to submit to the development services department a revised parking layout that indicates the location of the loading space. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission make the findings in support of the conditional use permit request and conditionally approve CUP 78-01-R located at 289 Placerville Drive based on the project information and findings and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Concise and to the point, I just want, for the record, to go over a couple of concerns. Ms. Hunter and I had a brief discussion this afternoon about this staff report, and as I understand it, right now, the intent is to have the...this as a tire repair shop. I was...I just want to make sure that the public is protected from any hazardous materials, and so I just want to make everyone...assure everyone that it is the Elrato County Environmental Management Division that will ensure that tire disposal and things of that nature are up to their standards. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And my other question was concerning the loading. You mentioned this in the staff report. It's not really clear where that should be, but it makes sense to me to have the applicant and city staff, along with engineering, identify the proper place for this loading of merchandise in and out, and to make sure that traffic flow around the parking lot is unimpeded, so...
Yes.
Okay.
There was one loading stall from the previous approval. It's not shown on the site plan currently, but there is a surplus of parking, just based on the calculation staff has done, so there is adequate space, and that would just be a conversation between the applicants and us to finalize that plan.
Okay, good. So there's adequate space, and that's under condition...condition number two, to submit that plan to development services department. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have a question for staff? No? At this time, so the applicant is here in the audience tonight? Yes? Okay. I don't know if any of the commissioners have questions, but at this time, we...it's an opportunity for you to step up to the podium if there's something about your application you would like to summarize or emphasize to us, and, you know, I, first off, want to appreciate you for taking time to come down here to talk to us about this. It seemed very straightforward and in keeping with, you know, what we want to do with that Placerville Drive corridor, but thank you very much. Are you Mr. Najma?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioner. My name is Tavish. I'm here just to coordinate and get it translated.
I'm sorry, could you speak up a little bit?
Sure. Can you hear me? Is it better?
No, I can't.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Tavish. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Koser. She's here as well, but I'm here to interpret for you and also kind of give you the...give her the moral support to go through the process. So as far as the project, like the staff member mentioned, you know, it's going to be a tire shop, and I know you brought up a concern about the loading, so as far as the loading, you know, the bay is in the back of the building, so it's going to be completely uninterrupted from the normal circulation, and it's going to be away from the public, and besides that, it's over an acre lot, so it's more than ample area, or, you know, it's not going to interrupt any sort in any way with the circulation of the traffic. And as far as your...well, I just addressed your second point, but as far as the first point, the disposal, you know, so there's a disposal every two days, three days, you know, there's a third-party company that comes in and they picks up all the tires and then dispose them. So it's a state-mandated thing where it has to go through these approved recyclers who come and pick them up.
Right, and I remember now, it's the Bureau of Automotive Repair.
Correct.
It's mentioned several times in conditions of approval, as well as in the staff report, so we have the assurance that...
Sure.
Yeah, that the tires are collected and taken off-site.
Definitely, definitely, of course. Yeah, that's going to be addressed and shouldn't be any problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from...okay. Thank you very much. Please have a seat.
No problem. Thank you.
Anyone from the public would like to step up to the podium and address the commission on this project? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of our public hearing and bring it back to the commission for possible action. This seems very straightforward and in keeping with other businesses that we have on Placerville Drive, so I'm inclined to support it. Anyone else have a comment or concern?
That would be my inclination as well.
All right.
Just echo the same things, but I'm impressed with the way it was presented. The plans are just nicely detailed and doesn't leave much room for question. It's very impressive.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll be comfortable making a motion. I felt the same. I think it's a pretty straightforward and valuable addition. So I would like to make a motion that we make the following findings in support of the conditional use permit 78-01-R as listed on page nine and 10 of the staff report, numbers one through eight, and that we conditionally approve CUP 78-01-R located at 289 to 295 Placerville Drive, APN 323360009, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated February 18th, 2025.
Second motion. And then, under discussion, and if I may, to staff, going to item number four on attachment one, recommended conditions of approval, says no signage was submitted. Is it staff's understanding that the applicant plans to use the existing signage dimensions?
Yes.
Yeah. I assume that, but I thought I just probably ought to make sure, okay? And then any changes to that would come back as part of a master sign package. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. Ms. Hunter, please call the vote.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
So four oh passes. This is subject to a 10-day appeal to the city council, but as you heard, we feel that this is very straightforward, and good luck with your project. Again, appreciate you taking time to come down here and answer a few questions that we had. 10.2 is a site plan review, 78-11-R4, for the Hangtown Village Square master sign plan revision. I'll turn this over again to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So the subject request seeks to revise the master sign plan for the existing commercial center, Hangtown Village Square. The current sign plan was approved under the original planning approval for the site, site plan review 78-11, and provided dimensions and location on scaled elevations, which are shown in figure two of the staff report. So this is what we would use to determine location, sign, dimensions, et cetera, et cetera. So the purpose of the sign regulation ordinance is to promote and maintain visually attractive commercial centers, maintaining property values, while also encouraging signs that are well-designed and pleasing in appearance. Master sign plans are a requirement of the city for commercial businesses, buildings, or centers with more than two tenants and are intended to be enforced and upheld by the property owner. The proposed revision specifically looks to provide clarity and simplicity for minor tenants of Hangtown Village Square for location, size, material, number of signs, and the protocol for installation of signage. Of note, the application does not propose modifications to signage approved for Rite Aid, the monument sign, or the multi-tenant pole sign, as shown in figures three and four of the staff report. The commercial center has a cumulative frontage of approximately 581 feet with allowable aggregate area of approximately 1,162 square feet. Based on the assignment of one wall sign for each unit, not including Rite Aid, the proposed wall signage is approximately 300... proposed wall signage is approximately 395 square feet. Now, that's just wall signs. Does not take into account any other signs. Each unit is allotted one double-sided projecting sign under the covered walkway to provide direction for pedestrians. Staff estimates that the total signage incorporating existing signage not intended to change and the newly proposed criteria, it's approximately 1,084 square feet. It is the opinion of staff that the new sign criteria is appropriate in design and scale, and will provide for adequate advertising for each unit and tenant located within the commercial complex. Further, all signs shall be of commercial, sorry, of professional quality, and are well-designed and will enhance advertisement of the structure. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the findings in support of the Site Plan Review request, including that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Secu Section 15301, and conditionally approve Site Plan Review 78-11-R4, based on the project information and findings, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff about the report or the proposed master sign plan? Okay. At this time, we'd like to ask the representative to step up to the podium, if you would. And I don't know if any of you have questions about the sign plan?
We don't.
Okay. May have wasted a trip. I don't think we have any questions. Again, always want to thank you for coming down here in case there were questions, but I will, I do want to thank you for a straightforward, clear description of what you have in mind. I think it's good. I think it's good, you know, advertising for the businesses that are there, but not, definitely not overpowering. So, you know, congrat, or, thank you for a well-done, well-thought-out design.
Thank you.
Any question, any?
Is that easy?
That's easy, yeah.
No, no, of all the signs around, that's a very impressive display of signs. They're thoughtful, and they don't glare out at you, and they're effective.
Yeah, it definitely fits into the theme of the city, for sure.
Could you?
Oh, no, I said it fits into the theme of the city.
I still...
The signage.
The theme.
Theme of the city.
Oh, it's in keeping with the theme of the Hangtown Village.
Correct, correct.
Indeed. Okay. Please have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Straightforward, updating.
Public comment.
Thank you for that. Would anyone like to comment on the project? Okay. No one from the public has stepped up to comment, so I'll close that portion of our hearing and bring it back for action by the commission. Seemed very straightforward. We all seem inclined. No questions about what's proposed. Can I have a motion?
One last shot, Michael. Last go.
I don't want to mess it up.
You got the...
All right. Sure. I'm going, I'm going old school, because it's all I kind of remember. I'm going to move that we approve Site Plan Review SPR 78-11-R4, Hangtown Village Square, Master Sign Plan Revision, adopting a staff report as part of the public record, and make the findings as indicated on page seven of the staff report, Roman numeral one, items one through five, and Roman numeral two, which is to conditionally approve SPR 78-11-R4 located at 1216 to 1252 Broadway, based upon the project information and findings as presented by staff.
A second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I need to modify my motion, because I think I failed to incorporate the recommended conditions of approval as found in Attachment 1.
I was going to read enough.
Yes. Yep. I wasn't going to read all of them, and those conditions are one through, boy, there's quite a few here. I'm not sure how I should best, I'm just going to say as indicated in Attachment 1, and not go through all the verbiage.
I think that's okay. A second thought.
Okay. So, we have a, an amended motion and a second. My only concern is the adoption of the staff report. We have stopped doing that. Since we have no modifications to the staff report, are you comfortable with including that in the motion?
Um, yes, we can certainly add that.
Yes?
Sorry, yes.
Okay.
You know, I learned how to do it that way, and I never unlearned it.
That's okay.
Twenty-four, twenty-four years, it's hard to break. That happened.
It's fine. We can, we can certainly incorporate the staff report.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, going against protocol. Very good.
Just this time for Commissioner Friend.
It's, it's part of the public record, though.
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
I mean, I'm just, you know, adopting it as part of the public record.
It is. And so, it's, it's kind of a, I don't know, fail-safe, I guess, since it is part of the public record. Anyway, further discussion about the motion or, all right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right. 4O approval, and our applicant has already left the room, anyway. It is subject to a 10-day appeal, however, it's very straightforward, and I'm sure it will go through without any further ado. All right. So, we'll move on to number 11, which is continued items, which we have none, new business, none. And now, we'll move on to 13, matters from commissioners and staff, and 13.1 is staff reports. Ms. Hunter, any updates for us?
I do. I have a few. So, the next Planning Commission meeting will be March 18th. We do not anticipate a meeting on March 4th. This is just to allow staff to catch up, and we did have to delay the Planning Commission appointments. So, an update on that, I'm reading from the website now. The deadline has been extended. You can apply by February 27th of this year, and the public interviews are now scheduled for Wednesday, March 5th, at 5:00 PM here in this room. Let's see. An update on Mallard and Middletown Affordable Housing Projects. They are continuing to move forward. Mallard has building permits, so they're moving forward with construction. Middletown is working out their onsite improvement plans. Let's see, we're coming up on, once again, our Housing Element Annual Progress Report Submittal to the state, so we're hoping to get that done next month. It's due April 1st, so we'd like to bring it to you on a timely manner, rather than late, as we normally do. And lastly, I can certainly make copies of this flyer, but I recently met with a representative from the El Dorado County Historical Society. They will be having a historic home tour of the Bedford Avenue Historic Homes. It will be on Saturday, April 19th, from 11:00 to 4:00 PM. There are ticket sales, so tickets are $30, or $22.50 for members of the Historical Society. So, I'm happy to send you a copy of this. Yeah. And I believe that is all from me.
Anything from you, Mr. Cahill?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Very good. All right. Now, we'll move to 13.2, Planning Commission Matters. And under this item, we have 13.2.1, which is our, continuing our discussion about the, regarding the historic preservation, recommendation number four, systematic examination of the current standard for review.
I was going to ask if it'd be a good time for a break?
You'd like to take a break? All right. Let's adjourn. It's 6:39. Let's reconvene at 6:50, please.
So, I think we can, I think this just gives us a framework and...
But I think that's something that we could have common purpose on.
Disjointed...
Figure out how to do it.
Lower the volume and the heat.
Yeah, totally.
Convene a little bit early. That's okay.
Oh.
It's seven, oh, it's seven, somewhere it's, it's 6:48, and I'm going to get cold. Our Planning Commission meeting back to order, and we will proceed to 13.2.1, our discussion of the direction regarding historic preservation, recommendation number four, the systematic examination of the current standard for review. So, we were, in our packet, there are a couple of attachments regarding this. Let me flip through. In addition to the direction, our discussion and our direction then from City Council, both Amy Lepper and myself submitted documents for your commission review and discussion. Mine was more directed on number four and how we could perhaps proceed. And in addition to that, I think what Amy Lepper submitted to us is what, the way I understand it, this is kind of a new look that we could consider for presenting information. So, Amy, would you like to go ahead and start and walk us through what you found and maybe recommendations? I don't know if you have specific recommendations or you just want discussion, but let's go ahead and do that first. And then, if timing, time allows, I'd like to see if anyone has comments on my memo due January 28th. So, go ahead and sort yourself, Amy.
Yeah, so it kind of evolved as I was doing it, and it started just as a general search, which I said historic neighborhood standards in California, and just started digging into what, what our peers were doing and what was going on across the board. And that just dug me, or led me to all of the links that I provided, which really were just an array of things to kind of look at different ways that other cities are doing things. And it brought me to the City of Redlands website. So, and this goes in line exactly with what yours was. Yours was more to the point of the, of the recommendation for, which I totally appreciated and thought that it was really great. And I'm, mine kind of focused on where we'll house these and how we can sort of approach flushing these out to be presented to the public. So, I found the City of Redlands website, which is this, to be very basic, and it didn't have a lot of sub-pages that it went to, where we would have to build out a lot of websites or anything. It's just a lot of PDFs. That are very basic. And so, at our current website, what we have is, this is our main historic district's residential information. It has a very basic street map that doesn't give a lot of detail, doesn't really help you know your house directly easily is in it. And it also isn't really linked to the building department as, it's under Planning Division, but you don't necessarily go directly to know how that ties into being in the historic district and identifying the steps that you need to take. So, I guess what it kind of did is I was looking all around and found that if we could start to flush out the actual documentation and then get it cohesed into one, one website that really educates people, then we could take it out to the public and really present it in a, a well-formatted manner that makes it really achievable for people to understand. And I think that that is one of our biggest misses in terms of the public understanding, or the public accessing the information about us having these districts and also living within them. So, that's kind of, it's not necessarily directly tied to number four, but it's just sort of gave me a framework for us to sort of work towards achieving that I thought was relevant to what our city actually does with our historic neighborhoods. I don't know how much sense that made, this a little bit, but I just wanted to get the discussion going. And the reason I included the other ones was to see that there is a really wide range of ways that people are managing these. I think a lot of them are way overkill for what our needs are, but just to give ideas of how other cities have really approached these and the depths that they've gone into, and the ways that we can sort of meet them there without producing a ton of extra work or work for the website and things like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, I did visit some of the other websites that you provided, and as well, some other ones that I found as well. So, you know, I, it's my opinion that, yeah, the information is there at the Placerville website somewhere, but it's not necessarily easy to click on. So, I appreciate that you found, and, you know, I'm willing to go with your opinion, having surveyed all these other ones, that we should take a close look at the City of Redlands for possible reformatting, organization of the information that we currently have, as well as what we may develop in the near future.
Yes. I thought that their headlines, or whatever you would call those, the overview, the historic preservation, the informational brochures, I thought those were good sort of buckets for us to have on our website. I thought they hit what we need. And so, I thought they could kind of be over each discussion that we have, maybe even when Kristin says that we might go into future discussion topics, we could start to tackle each one to really get them, get something, a product put out there and finalized, and work to have the cohesive communication that we're really looking for. Because I guess that also ties back to, I did go through your questions and sort of write viewpoints that I had on them of the, the five common questions. But I think if we flush out a lot of the information we have, and we make sure that, and if we do end up going towards these sustainability standards and not have to rewrite standards, I actually think we have a lot of the substance there. It just needs to be cleaned up, refreshed, like the maps. We could really use some new maps, you know, on there. They don't have to be major, but there's not an easy way to even see if your house falls into, into there without really digging in. So, something as basic as that, I think, could accomplish some of our communication goals.
First of all, I'd like to commend both you and the chair for the documents that you presented, because I, I was really impressed with the information in both of these. Okay? And I think they will serve this body well, even after I have been shoved off to the dustbin of history. Going back to, but on, on this discussion in particular, going back to the memo of January 7th from Mr. Morris, and under recommendation one, it seemed, because it seems like you're almost kind of working on some of these, and I wanted to make sure, even though we're going to kind of focus on recommendation four, it seemed like particularly with, with Mayor Noe had offered to assist with several tasks, that we, we should not lose that. And it seems like you're already doing some work in that, and I would like to make a strong recommendation to this body in moving forward, that we continue to work on these bullets, reviewing the website, the informational flyers. And then, Commissioner Smith, you would probably be very helpful in helping to identify nonprofits who might be able to help us with the signage, because I think the, the council was okay. They thought it was a good idea, and they were okay with it. But if we could find a nonprofit perhaps to take that on, to fund, fund that, and, and really to take that project on, and that, that seems to be an arena that I think you would have some particular expertise. I just want to make sure that this, this doesn't get lost, because I, I think this is low-hanging fruit, even though the, the council said number four should be the priority. I will make an admission, confession, I've been really displeased at the inability to, the inability to have a workshop. But then, going back through Cleve's memo, apparently the council doesn't think a workshop is necessary, and that this forum is adequate for, for what we're doing. And I suppose that at, at this level where we're at right now to get the discussion going, that's probably true. It seems to me that once we get to some specific decisions, though, we are, I would hope that we're going to have more outreach. Now, again, I'm going to be gone, so I'm just, all I can say is, here's what I hope will happen. This, this whole project is very important and dear to me, so, you know, I really want it to be successful. And I think we've really, we really need to kind of understand, I think, why, what are we trying to accomplish? Because the big challenges has been, for, for me, has been when people come to us with, with projects on, not... on, not historic buildings per se, but buildings that are in the historic districts, right? And they want to, you know, change their windows and their siding and all of that. And you know all of the angst that we've gone through over that. And I'm not sure, I'm unclear at this point in time where we're at in the whole, you know, like for like, and we can't add those, the new products, yet it seems that, and in one of your documents, I think, Chris, it said, you know, emphasis added, that it isn't necessary to have wood, for example, right? Between the lines, which is a huge departure from the dogma I thought we were living under, right? So, yeah, these to me are really big decisions that we're going to have to deal with. Then, the only thing I just want to say, I'm not sure in anything that I've read and seen so far, how it would address the structure that was demolished here not that long, well, maybe two years ago, time goes by so fast, to me it seemed like yesterday, but there was a building that had history attached to it from a family that lived here, longtime family, and it was right up Cedar Ravine, I believe, right? And it wasn't in the historic registry. Was it in the, was it in the historic district?
Yes.
It was in the historic district.
You're talking about the one on Cedar Ravine?
Yeah. And I, I was really displeased that that building could not have been better protected or something. And, look, it was falling apart, you know, but there, I at least wanted just some kind of a headstone or something that said, this building used to be, that marked the location. I mean, it's like gone, right? It's gone to history. There's nothing now. And I'm not sure that any of this, how it addresses that, how it resolves that, because I think that's a loss. You follow what I'm saying?
Do, but I actually sort of disagree, because I think with having the, when you read these new sustainability standards, they do allow for a lot of new materials to be brought in that maintain the character, which I understand is our goal. The materials has always been a sort of tricky one for me, because without a robust reason for why that building needs to have wood go in with the wood, I have a hard time justifying the cost for that.
Right.
So I actually think that getting these new standards in place will help us to preserve some of those, because if people can put in a vinyl window, for example, instead of the wood, that will help people to be able to accomplish the preservation, such as the gentleman that has the red house up Cedar Ravine, bought it for his daughter, whatever, you know, that was an-
All right, that's a nineteen-
Okay, so, yeah. So he's an example of someone who's really working hard to preserve that house, to bring it back up to what it could be. My house was the same, I'm not in a historic district, but I've put a ton of time and money into bringing it back up to where it needs to be without changing the character. So I do think that this will speak to that. I actually feel more confident in being able to allow people. I go back to that woman when I first got on the commission on forty nine that had the windows that leak and-
Oh, right.
Big, huge windows. Every time I drive by there, I feel bad. I feel like she got caught up in some confusion that we had, and then after we kind of switched and started allowing people to do the windows that she wanted. So I think that's a little confusing, and I don't, I don't think any value would have been lost in hindsight of giving her those windows and allowing her to preserve the wood that is being ruined. My friend is her neighbor, you know, that has, that house has been impacted by those windows. So, so all that to say, I actually do think that this will move us along into-
I do, I agree with-
Without necessarily getting caught up in wood, wood.
That I, that I agree with, I really do. And I think that whatever decision is made, it, the other thing, and kind of getting to what you're presenting here, clear articulation of what is okay and how you go about, you know, just make it real-
Then a workshop.
Then a workshop, right?
Yeah.
And hearing from folks. But again, but I'm not sure what, I'm not sure about the, that building was demolished, because again, I don't know that building was salvageable, but somehow marking that space, I mean, again, I'm just, you know, it bothers me that it's completely gone and there's no marker or anything there at all, I just, how all this works. But anyway-
I remember at the time that that came up, came before the body, and you had expressed a desire to have a marker. And I was not comfortable with that at the time, because I felt like that was some sort of step toward, you know, mitigation. And the way our findings read is that, you know, this was a building that had been red-tagged, it was not habitable, and it had been red-tagged for quite some time. And, you know, we saw the pictures, we agreed with that, that that building was so far beyond the first step of the standards, which is preservation. And we all need to look at that and keep in mind that these standards from the Secretary of Interior are set up in an order of preference, and preserving is number one. So in case in point, on Cedar Ravine, that house was so far past any kind of preservation. And-
It had multiple, there had been multiple constructions and additions and deletions and-
Right.
All right, so I get that, yeah.
Yeah, in no way reflected the original building. So I was not comfortable with the idea of the marker, because I didn't want to undermine our authority, because we looked at that as a hazard, it, you know, it needed to be abated, and so this was the way that the, you know, the city could proceed to get hazardous situation resolved. Now, the idea of a marker, again, you know, it seems like a nominal expense, but again, who pays for that? Who's going to decide on what the language is? And if this is important, if this is something that the citizens of Placerville, the city wants to do, then, yeah, we should establish that. We should say, here's a fund for markers, here's the language that we're looking for on the markers, and so in the future, you know, we can do much better than we did.
Yeah, I think the applicant was even willing to do it. And I don't have an issue with an applicant who, they wanted to demolish the building, right? They go, okay, no problem, but here's what we, as terms of mitigate, here's what we would like to have, so we don't lose entirely that. But anyway, these are the things that this body is going to have to wrestle with. Again, I think that what's here is kind of a good start. The question's going to be, where do you start, how do you bite this, where do you start eating this elephant, right? And I like what Amy's putting together here. Again, I am going to go back to recommendation one with these easy ones, because I think these can be done concurrently with recommendation four. And so I, you know, I don't want to-
I guess I have a few things to add. First of all, I concur in part with Commissioner Friend regarding the desire to have a workshop. You had two people who worked on a committee for a long time, and we gave you the reasons for why that was appropriate. And I also told you that in this room, I'm the only one who was here before the Historic Advisory Committee a number of times, before this body a number of times, and finally before the city council, when it adopted the Secretary of Interior's guidelines, and can tell you that I, like many other people, told you that the guidelines being proposed were riddled with problems. And if anything, that's an understatement for what we've got now. It's a mess, that to be very kind, it's a mess.
Which guidelines?
The guidelines that we operate now. Over and over, we come up with this issue about like-for-like and should we have vinyl windows, double-pane windows and wood frames and so on, and those things have never been resolved. I guess the second thing I'd point out is, if, is to suggest, Charquini, if you realize that every single thing you said about that property on Cedar Ravine was said by everyone with the city regarding the property down at the Heritage Building. It is red-tagged, it is, it cannot be saved, it has no cultural or historic value. Pierre Rivas was on the city council when that body unanimously approved a demolition permit, and did so after they had an affidavit from Steve Calfee that said it had no historic or historical significance. Look at it now. People said it could not be saved. You had the city hire an architect who said it couldn't be saved. It could. That building that Commissioner Friend just referred to on Cedar Ravine had been red-tagged, that's true. But the real problem that you haven't looked at, any of you, is that that property was in receivership. And it was put in receivership by the city, just as it put, sought to do that for the property on the Hengman Street buildings, the Heritage Buildings. And so as a result, there are all these expenses. So these fines that have been built up by the city were enormous. So the cost of being able to buy that building had now ballooned. Why? Because of the city. The city had imposed fines and put extra costs because of going into receivership. That lawyer, who served as a receiver, got paid. And paid out of what? The total sales price. So that's one of the problems that this-
Okay, so what do you suggest?
Beg your pardon?
Yeah.
What am I suggesting?
Well, what, I'd like to just move forward in terms of like-
I know you would.
What your suggestion is then for moving forward.
The suggestion is that you have a workshop.
Okay, what if no one shows up to the workshop?
Beg your pardon?
What if no one shows up to the workshop?
You're not going to have anybody come to a workshop when it's not publicized.
I'm saying, let's say we publicize it.
Yes.
Let's say we have this magic workshop and no one shows up. Where are we at?
We can do, whether they show up or not, we can do what politicians typically do, which is they can-
I'm not a politician.
They can do what they want, but at least they say, we've listened, we heard from people. But you can't say that now, because that hasn't been done.
Can next meeting you show up with a suggestion for how the workshop would look to get the most input that you feel would be valuable?
The one way to get the workshop is you have an outline of some typical-
Would you be willing to write that outline to show me what you think would be valuable and have questions outlined?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to see it.
Because-
I'd like to see a product, because I hear a lot of talking, and with all due respect, I'd like to see a little bit more product then, because I wrote something, Chris wrote something, I don't see any product. So I enjoy your stories, I enjoy the history of it, but I would like to move sort with some product, you know, some items that are tangible.
And I would offer-
With all due respect.
I would offer that a framework for a workshop absolutely should be laid out, and I think a lot of the materials that you've put together would be one of the elements in that work. I mean, I think there's several objectives that we're trying to accomplish all at the same time, right?
Yeah, so I'm not going to be putting together the workshop.
No, 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 absolutely. We've all, we've kind of listed them, they're all actually kind of listed out here, and the workshop can, could hit on all of them. Commissioner Smith, you know how much I support this concept. My only hesitation is that, you know, the council kind of doesn't necessarily think it's of value yet, but that doesn't mean they're opposed to it. I think, I think if it was well-developed and then presented, it looks like this, and then that would have to also include the outreach advertisement, right? How do we promote it's going to happen? And I think you have particular expertise in that, given your affiliation with the Historical Society and other groups. So I think it's doable. I don't think, I don't think it has to be a zero-sum game. I think all these things are possible and doable.
I think the workshop is, we're not ready for it yet, although I would like to see an outline of what the workshop would be about, how we could do the outreach, and also I'd like to get some idea of costs. Right now, the city is, you know, financially strapped. Workshops are expensive, and you often dismiss this, Kirk, but I don't know that you've taken a realistic look at how much all of that costs. And, you know, we may want to get an expert in here, but it's not, it's not free, even though we have a website, even though we have some staff who can, you know, launch things for us, there's still staff time, and staff is burdened. And so when we ask for that kind of investment, we need to be very clear on what it is that the city can gain from it. So I'm, I agree with Amy and Michael that it's, it's kind of over in your court right now. You've said this many times, that you want to have a workshop, but it's, we never hear specifically what it is you want to discuss. For my part, I outlined before you how I see the SOI standards, and I think, you know, I completely disagree that it's a mess. I think that our problem with the SOI standards is that we think that they are black and white. And in fact, as you read them and if you read briefs, I mentioned in my memo from the twenty-eighth of January, this number sixteen, the use of substitute materials. And Kristin, I'll, you know, I'm going to send the link around, and I want you, I would appreciate you giving it to the other planning commission members. And I really encourage you to read this for detail, because this talks about cost-effectiveness, doing the visual duplication of historic materials. And something I found very interesting on page two is the historical use of substitute materials. We seem, we've painted ourselves into a corner, and we're misusing a term, this like-for-like, which, you know, I have never, it does not occur in the Secretary of Interior standards. That is not a phrase they use, and for some reason, that's become our shorthand.
I thought it was in the original version.
Well, again, I, you know, I challenge, I need to know where that actually came from.
I just want to say, I found this to be hugely enlightening, what your reference to this technical bulletin. I mean, I thought this was profound, and I really wished we had had it a long time ago, to be perfectly on it. I don't even know, can you say how you came across this?
Oh, it's the power of Google.
Thank you, yes, thank you for asking, yes.
Well, this, this is really, this I thought was hugely helpful.
And this is from our, you know, the National Park Service, where the-
Yes.
Standards came from, and it is, you know, a common sense interpretation, because, you know, this situation has arisen all across the nation. I think they realize that people have painted themselves into the corner, thinking that it has to be the same. And, you know, when you read the original standards, when you read this illustrated guideline for sustainability, which came out more recently, I can't remember the date, you know, this was in our packet.
April.
And then this number seven, sixteen, preservation briefs, you realize that there is so much flexibility. And this, you know, I appreciate the idea of a workshop, and I think that eventually we do need to get there, but again, I'm not really sure what it is we need to discuss. And if in the next month or, you know, two, we get another application before us in our historic district, we need to start preparing ourselves for, to be logical and consistent with all these applicants. And honestly, you know, I look at the work that we've done, and I think that we have done a good job of applying the SOI standards. I think we have been consistent. We look at these structures in context, and we need to, I always keep in mind, and I think the commission has too, that the city's interest is from the street view. And you look at language in our general plan, you look at language in the ordinance, and what we're trying to preserve is really an aesthetic. And that's the, that's the extent of the city's jurisdiction and concern. We're trying to keep a look so that people are attracted, they want to tour into these neighborhoods, so we enhance our tourism, we come, you know, people love to look at the architecture. And, you know, nowhere in the, there are recommendations, there are preferences on how you approach a restoration and a rehabilitation. And so, yeah, of course, if you can find an identical substitute replacement, that is your number one preference. But, you know, I think we hamstring ourselves by saying, that's the only thing we can do. There are lots of options, and there are more and more every day. And before I turn it over to you, Michael, I just wanted to point out one thing I found when I kind of clicked around at the different sites that you identified, Amy. Other communities have done more specific definitions of what their historic districts are, and there's things like era of significance. And, you know, we have not done that in Placerville. We kind of generally looked at geographically where there are some older houses and buildings that we felt, that at that time, they felt were important to preserve. But, you know, that's what, that's our working material today. In the future, as we have money, if we can find a grant- In the future, as we have money, if we can find a grant to do another historical survey, if we can find a grant to pay for other things to update our historic districts, you know, that is going to be fantastic. And maybe the city will have some money to contribute to that and take on what I realize is a very big job. I looked at our historical inventory, and, you know, that's a lot of work. And to go and do that again, again, very expensive. You need to get the, you can have volunteers, but you do need to have professionals overseeing their work. And it's a big task. But as far as a planning commissioner, you know, I've got people coming in here on a regular basis wanting to make a modification to their home. And I really think that the tools that we have are usable and provide flexibility. And so I'm not, I don't feel like we need to throw everything out and start back, you know, whole cloth. For the time being, what we need to do is take a methodical, logical look at what we've got. And that's why I suggested that we have some standard findings. Again, this is, gets back to consistency for applicants that come before us. And so if we have, in, you know, our files, findings that are substantive and robust, then we can demonstrate that, you know, we are looking at all these things in context, and we're treating everyone fairly and treating everyone consistently, at the same time, helping them preserve these structures. So I want to turn it over to Michael first, he has his microphone on.
I just want to say, taking a 30,000-foot level consideration, when we use the word preservation, we could talk about preserving the actual substance, the wood. But I think far more important is we're trying to preserve the character and appearance, right?
Of a district.
The vibe, you know.
We're looking at the district, yes.
So that's really where we need to be starting with. And I think to support the workshop, I think we have to articulate these 30,000-foot level goals that are going, that drive and support the use of historic districts and the application of the standards. And so, and I'm not sure those are as well-articulated as they should be. And I think if we do that, those are discussion points, right? And I think we, you're right, we have gotten wrapped around the axle on the whole, well, you know, you have wood, you got to replace it with wood, et cetera, right? And like, what you brought to the table, I think to me, was hugely enlightening, so.
Well, I guess, no one's suggesting you throw it all out and start from scratch. Nobody's suggesting that. And I do think you very carefully, both of you, described the primary purpose of the guidelines, to preserve the historic character that enhances the property values and the character of the community. That's all agreed. There are a couple of other concerns that have cropped up over recent years. One is fire threats. So we want to be able to consider application of products that are now available, that may look like the original, but are fire-resistant, and some actually fireproof. The other is, when we talk about double-pane windows, what are we talking about? We're talking about energy conservation, a concern that nobody had big on their landscape, you know, a dozen years ago. So that's one of the considerations. I have no confidence that any of us are familiar with the issue of double-pane windows, because they're not created equal, they're different. I would propose and would want to have, and started to look at one time, for a representative of a trade group, not like Anderson or one of the actual manufacturers, but somebody from the industry who can talk about the various products.
To what end?
What end?
You've mentioned that several times. So we have representatives come in. What I fear is that, you know, we create a list that is maybe current for 2025, and then in 2026, other products come available. Do we, if we create one list, then we're, put ourselves in the position of having to update it whenever new materials come available. And as far as, you know, gauging the utility of a double-pane window or something that provides wildfire safety, I really, I think that we are educatable. And I think it's also the responsibility of the homeowner to present that in their application. And that may be something, I meant to address that in my memo, but down the line, make sure that applications that become, that come before us actually do address those kinds of things. If you're, you know, claiming that you want to change a window, well, show us, you know, bring it in, bring a good brochure, so that we really know what it is you're talking about. And that may be the best option in 2025. Now, and so then if we say, you know, brand X is what we want, then in 2027, someone comes in and says, "Oh, no. Brand A is so much better." But, so then we have this, this old outdated list that we have to go to the trouble, or Steph has to go to the trouble of updating. I would rather we retain our control of evaluating materials as they come before us. I mean, these historic buildings, things have been, new materials came along all the time that were used and were completely suitable and worked in the moment. But we really don't, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. But, you know, your point, we need to have our applicants demonstrate to us for the public record that they have done their research and they have presented to us, and we've evaluated it, you know. And keep in mind that our purview is the aesthetic. We're looking to keep the look, preserve the look of the structure, preserve the look of our historic districts for reasons that are stated in the general plan. And so that's really, that's our responsibility. It's the responsibility of the homeowner to make the selection of materials that make them a great.
Are you saying that our responsibility is only in that, in that field only, and cannot include such as cost-effectiveness, such as putting a vinyl window, as I heard earlier, say that that would be cost-effective? It'd be more advantageous for somebody up on Cedar Ravine to, in a 1950s house, to put a vinyl window in there because it's more cost-effective? Is that a consideration?
Well, we need to look at every application in context. Is it cost-effective?
How do we know it's cost-effective if we don't know the energy?
We don't usually go off cost, though. We often shy away from that, because that is, unless it gets to a million dollars or zero, we don't go there.
Well, we have-
We have, we've talked about it, but we try not to go there, because a hundred dollars to me, a hundred dollars to you are very, could be two different-
It is, it is, it is described-
We have tried to stay away from that.
It is referenced specifically in the guidelines about cost-effectiveness. Madam Chair, I'd like to-
I think when it becomes obscene is when that's referenced.
Possibly change this up a little bit, and wonder if you might want to open it up to the public, because we do have some public members here, and see if they're interested in having, weighing in on any of our discussion at this point.
Is that, is that appropriate for a, for this item? Okay, okay, so this not just matters among, so 13.1 was from staff. We don't take public comment on that, but this, I thought, was a discussion for the commissioners to-
I thought anything on the, the public can comment on anything, it's on the published agenda.
You're right.
That's, that's the law, so, and I think there might be some interest.
Well, before we do that, I just want to be very clear, you know, the three of us feel, you know, there is some value to having a workshop, as you mentioned. Actually, both of you are advocates of that, and I'm not opposed to it, it's just I feel like Amy and I are not clear on what the range of topics would be. And in fact, that's, that's not correct. What should we do first in a workshop? Again, you know, we, we don't want to go so far afield that the public comes in and we don't make any progress. I think we really do need to use a, be very specific. What is it that you feel should be addressed in a public workshop that could be accomplished in an evening? That is not all-encompassing, and so-
That we haven't topped, touched on or have-
Right, so-
First of all, what-
Well, actually, I'm just leaving that as kind of your assignment or your, you know, your-
Metaphorical question.
Yeah, that you could provide to the commission to come back to, submit to staff to include in the agenda, so that, you know, the public is aware. What is it that you feel should be taken on as a first step? You know, think about how we're trying to approach this. We, as the special committee came up with a big range of things that need to be taken care of, we're trying to focus in on, okay, what can we do first? So before I open it up for public comment, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that's the direction that we want Mr. Smith to go in.
Yeah, I'd love to know the value added before we can do anything else of having a workshop.
My fantasy, well, first of all-
No, 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 not fantasy. What's the first step?
I'm using his words.
Yeah.
I'm using his words.
First step.
Because my answer would be that what went to the city council was not our work product.
Well-
What our work product, and the answer to your question, isn't our work product. We systematically described the first stage, so-
What do you mean, what went to the city wasn't our work product?
It was not of the special committee? No, it wasn't.
Well, I, we're, that's not correct, so I-
It was the recommendations.
It was our, it absolutely was our-
Recommendations about what we need to work on.
Right, from the planning commission. It's what we voted on, and that's-
Which is different from the product that was presented to you. And I'm saying-
Well, the special committee reported to the planning commission, and then the planning commission took that into consideration, and we sent our recommendations to city council. And so that's, that is-
Kind of like a committee dis-
What happened.
An elephant described as a committee trying to design a horse. I mean, it's not the same-
Okay, well, again, I don't want to get off topic.
Well, if you want me to finish, I could, I can leave you.
So our direction to you is to come back as soon as you can with a concise description of what this workshop would be focused on, what the topic or a few topics would be, to get us started on workshops. And then realize that once we have that one under our belt, we maybe take some action, there would be perhaps some future workshops.
Or if I might, it might not be necessary to have the workshop flushed out quite so quickly, because we, there's plenty of other work here that can be-
Oh, absolutely. That's what I kept trying to say, that's why I kept talking about the workshop.
I would, I would recommend to my colleagues that you continue on this, and Kirk begins, continues to formulate what he envisions a workshop to be, and then bring it back, bring that back.
I'd love to see anything beyond a workshop, too.
This was just, I wanted to clarify what our direction to Kirk Smith would be on the topic of workshops. For my work, I want to continue to refine this and draw in information from the updated briefs, the updated guidelines and so on. And I think, Amy, you've already kind of volunteered to maybe work with Jackie Noah, if she's still willing-
Yeah.
On redesigning. So I think we all have our work orders.
I do have one just quick question. When I was researching the Placerville Historic, you know I'm really obsessed with the inventory. I actually think that's a huge priority. I think it's undervalued by the city council, and I think it would solve a lot of problems. But I seem to be in the minority of that, but I will-
Oh, I don't think you're in the minority.
Of the, of it being a priority. I actually think it's probably my highest priority would be to do the inventory. And I'll tell you why, because I think that, number one, it's very messy right now. I think we could look at, so one of my questions I wrote is, what is the cost for the homeowner for these reviews? Are there some changes that we can make? So if we were to, for example, adopt these new standards, this sustainability ones that reference things like solar panels, things like that, cool roofs, if a historic building, and this is why I think the inventory, if a historic, if a building, if a, if a home in the historic district not on our main, you know, main inventory, our historic, like, significant buildings inventory, which I also think needs to be cleaned up and refreshed and really be publicized. But anyway, if this house is in there and they're coming in for a window, I don't really care what window it is. If we're not holding to, it has to be wood for wood, it has to be the, if it's vinyl, if it's whatever, plastic, I don't know the different windows. But I'm wondering if we could move some of those to being just easier for people to push through, rather than, because I don't know what the cost, what is the cost of someone coming before us?
For historic district review, it's $400 for the application.
What do you mean by easier to push through?
Not push through, so that sounds, but-
Do you mean how about a ministerial-
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to discretionary approval?
Sorry, I'm, yes, so if applicants, so two things is, one, I'm wondering if that's somewhere we could move down that, that saves time and money for applicants and things that are in non-historically significant buildings in the historic districts, such as-
I think, you know, I thought about this a lot, ministerial versus discretionary. And we, we do this, we talked about having a ministerial approval. And I don't know if you were on Planning Commission, Andrew Pena brought it forward, and we decided not to go that way. One, the city of Placerville is lacking this concise definition of our era of significance, and as you mentioned, the updated inventory of all the houses that are within our historic district boundaries. Other cities that I found and that you found, I, like I said, I clicked on a few of those websites and went through, they've gone to that extra expense and work of defining which, what era of significance they've had, they have in their districts. For example, some towns have districts that are of different eras, you know, much older, 18, for us, 1850s. And then a separate district that's maybe 1930s. Well, your standards for those two districts are necessarily going to be different. We don't really have that much in our inventory. And again, I argue that it's not so big that the planning commission can't take these on one at a time and look at things in context and come to, you know, a reasonable solution. However, you know, what you're talking about, making it ministerial, if this city had funds to invest in more updated inventory, and then we could develop that checklist to make it so much, yeah, so much more straightforward, like other towns do. Now, keep in mind that those other towns probably have hundreds of houses.
I agree, yeah, and that's why I kind of went back to the smaller ones. But the second point I do want to make is that when I went to the historic markers inventory, it was done by Stan Morris and Dee Owens. I don't know if you guys know them.
Way back in the day.
Yeah, so they were the ones who actually did our historic markers inventory, two individuals. It says, "The project goal is to identify, record, and inventory with high-quality mapping tools all of the city of Placerville's historic markers and monuments, utilizing GPS devices, existing information, MS Excel, and online mapping applications. Data on all accessible historic sites and locations with markers was collected, organized, and published. This project was presented to the city of Placerville's Historic Advisory Committee on January 17, 2013 by Stanley W. Morris as an independent effort of the initiators to support and enhance historical preservation and improve the experience of local tourism in Placerville." So it's there, and it was done by regular people. And so I do, I totally see the value, and I'm not trying to diminish the job at hand there. But I do think that there's ways that we could flush out our inventory to lower some of the thresholds on, to really know, okay, this is, these are the houses that we really want to say like with like. And then we could talk about, do we want to have context statements for them, things like that, that make them, I know, sorry, like with like. I saw you cringe. I saw you cringe, but you know, I'm just referencing a common term, that's all.
I think-
I'm referencing a new term. But what I'm saying is, is more valuable homes to us, or the ones that we really do want to maintain the look, the features, the, everything else, and then really think about. And that's why I said at the beginning, what are the purpose of these districts? Because I still don't have a clear answer of why they were picked, what houses are in them, and what the value is of them. I'm rolling with it, but if you really want to know my opinion, I don't, I haven't been told that answer. And I don't see it in anywhere I've researched.
What is the, what is the era of significance that is important to the city of Placerville? That is just a, you know, a concept statement, and then you can move from there. There was something, again, in the city's memo to us, people are throwing around dates of, there it is, "Consider a year to establish a cutoff for historic designation," and it says 1950, question mark. And, you know, I think that gets to the heart of this issue that you just brought up. I don't know why 1950 even came up. When you look at our inventory-
I think it had to do with that home on Cedar Ravine, the red house, right? It's just a basic 1950s house that got, it somehow got sucked into the historic district.
Because you're looking at an aesthetic for a district. Because you're looking at an aesthetic for a district.
Yeah, right. And, and this goes back to the workshop we had with council, and, and council member Clarici said, you know, those districts were drawn up, and, and the whole concept was, you know, to, to preserve pretty much Victorian and, and gold rush, the, the, the history of the founding of Placerville and all of that, right, the gold rush time. And so these districts were created because there are a lot of structures in there, but they, the way they were drawn was more of a convenience than necessarily driven by some specific characteristic.
Well, I don't know that convenience is the right word.
And that guy's, that guy's house got caught up in there.
It's more like a, a buffer.
Yeah, okay, but.
It's a buffer, and so.
But his, his home, the point being that, that his home, this 1950s home, really has no business be, preserving that was not necessarily the objective in the creation of the historic.
Well, again, I, you know, we, we don't have any clear statements at the time the districts were formed that clearly substantiate, you know, that, that's conjecture.
Except that you, you offer it in, in your document, you said the vast majority fall between, what, what's the, what's the great rate?
Well, 1930, but.
Up to 1930, right?
Think about the importance of having this buffer around, even if we had a, a statement of what's our era of, of significance, and it could go to 1930. You still want to preserve the look of your historic district outside of that. So you have a house from 1950, it's the job of the planning commission to look at the proposed changes to that 1950s house and make sure that it's still preserving an aesthetic for the rest of the district, which is made up of houses of different ages. And that's why, at this point, we really can't move to a ministerial process yet.
Yeah.
Until, until we have more.
Totally.
Specific definitions and, and what it is, we're, you know, our eras of significance that we want to preserve in these districts. So, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, but it's, again, it's, you know, it's going to take time, and, you know, money, yes, we can find the money, but mostly it's time. And I think what we always need to keep in mind is that we are going to have people coming before us, and we need to be comfortable with applying these standards and developing our own findings to substantiate, you know, our, our decision.
Are you interested in opening up the public hearing?
Yeah.
Well, I, I am.
Oh, okay.
And are you ready to have?
Yeah, and then I'll maybe make some comments eventually, too. I'm over here in the corner.
So we're kind of talked out. So anyone from the public here to step to the podium and speak to this topic?
We remember you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Carter.
Ryan Carter. I'll start by saying thank you for continuing this conversation. It's vital, and I appreciate, you know, even though it is sometimes contentious, it is absolutely important that we keep having this conversation. I'll start with just a couple of suggestions. I've mentioned it numerous times, and it's my favorite, the city of Grass Valley. Both their website and their ordinances, I would definitely recommend in your crafting of the website design that you check out, Grass Valley. They also, in kind of working within this conversation, you guys are talking about the idea of contributing and non-contributing structures within historic districts, they go through a grading process, and they have a lot of really good information that could really kind of help maybe inform that conversation. I also wanted to thank Commissioners Lepa and Kinney for specifically the two documents that you brought, the Guidelines on Sustainability, that was an amazing document, and also the one that you were talking about, the preservation brief that talks about substitute materials. Both of those were really great information that I honestly wish that I had found earlier. I mean, they're, they're fairly new, October 2023 was that preservation brief. Great information and really kind of makes this conversation a lot easier because there is a ton of work already done that we can just kind of move forward into. So I'll keep it brief, but I just wanted to say thank you for continuing this conversation. Thank you for those two documents, and definitely check out the city of Grass Valley, both their ordinance and their website. They're fantastic, and I think they could really go a long way in helping us crafting those things moving forward.
Thank you.
Ruth Carter, city of Placerville. So I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, this term like for like that keeps coming up over and over again. It's really, I feel like been adopted as a result of construction standards from the, like, planning and building department. In, in a way to describe things more simply, if you have a water heater and you replace it with another water heater, that's like for like, it's serving the same purpose, it's, you know, the same type of equipment, if you will. And so that's why that's something that could be done ministerially. And I do think that when it comes to windows, for the most part, if we really drill it down, it could be done very similarly. I want to read something. So for standard six on the SOI's, or the Secretary of Interior's standards, it says, deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced, or the severity of the deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature will match the old in-design color, texture, and where possible, materials. This principle encourages replacements that closely replicate the original elements to maintain the building's historic character, which is very important to our town, obviously. So when we're getting into the Victorians and the Gold Rush era homes, clearly that's part of the character, and we want to maintain that look. The local preservation guidelines refer to this practice as in-kind or like-for-like replacement, which I know is kind of a cringe thing for you, but that's the spirit of it, is more for the, the like-for-like replacement of materials where there's no change in the materials, the size, dimensions, and operation. That's where it originally came from and the way that it was originally intended to be interpreted. But now we have so many options, like you're saying, if we come up with a list, like, these are the approved things, right, and next year it's going to be, this is so much better, we should do this, but it's not in our thing. So I think it's really important to identify, you know, that what, what we're ultimately trying to achieve and preserve is the historic look and feel of our town at the end of the day. And a lot of that stuff could be cleared up with language and could be done ministerially. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate your clear reading of the standards, and this is the way that I've interpreted them since I've, you know, have come onto the commission. And we have to keep in mind that, you know, there, there is that hierarchy of the SOI standards, you know, preservation and replacing it with similar materials whenever possible. But as you continue to read through in each of the examples, they, you know, the reality is sometimes it's, it's just not possible, and so you have to have that flexibility. Something else to keep in mind that I read in some of these documents is we get very concerned about windows, and that is the aesthetic, that is the feel, it's a very small part of the structure, even with energy efficiency, with wildfire safety, it's, it's a, it's a minor contributor. Now, for the aesthetic, it's very important. And so when we look at things, Amy, you mentioned the house up on Sacramento Street. You know, the, I remember that that was a very intricate divided light window, and so that was really, when you, you look at the SOI standards, it was the look of that window that was really the, the most important thing to do.
Finding feature.
To make sure that the house doesn't lose that distinctive character. And so that's why, at this point, I, I really feel like we need to keep it, you know, within review of the planning commission and not just make it a ministerial change, because each one of these houses is a little, little different. I, I don't know that I've seen a divided light window like that since. I, I, they probably exist, it's just I haven't seen them, they haven't come before us to replace it. And so those, each one in context is, that, that's the job of the planning commission.
So, Madam Chair, what do you, what's your inclination at this point?
Well, you know, I've given some marching orders to Mr. Smith to come back to us when you can with some sort of an outline for our first public workshop. I've committed to doing some more research and perhaps developing a few of these.
There's a couple of things I, I throw out to you to consider.
I just want, and then, Amy, you are willing to reach out maybe to Jackie Noe and?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I, sorry. I am willing to reach out to her as long as I'm clear on what I am.
I was thinking of those first couple of bullets.
The first couple ones, yeah.
First, yeah, as.
Yeah, I can reach out to her about those.
This is from January 7th.
Yes.
Yeah, the.
Right.
Recommendation one, is it?
Review the website and the informational flyers. Signage, again, if we can start working on that, I think we all need to at least have some editorial control over that, but if you're willing to take that on.
I'm willing to, yes, I will continue to look at how we can further flesh out the website for sure, and, and add, and cohes all of our disjointed information that's currently there.
I look forward to seeing that. And you're off the hook, Michael Friend. Okay.
Could you just move? I don't think it's, can it go anywhere?
All right.
I guess what I'd ask you, Commissioner Lepa, is when you earlier talked about the windows, and I, I heard a cost component come in, you may have had a particular project in mind, but you, as I recall, did talk about the cost consideration. So what was that all about? What, what was that factor that we should be looking at when it comes to cost?
I was saying, if we can flush out our, our standards to be very straightforward, where a person with a non-contributing home in a historic district comes forward and says, I want to put up the same siding that's the hardy board or whatever, you know, a different kind, but looks the same like we've approved, the, you know, we had the woman do the shorter boards to match the same look, but it was a new material. My thought would be down the line, if these are flushed out, that that's something, if it's, it's the exact same look and maybe, you know, just a new material, that that's not something in a non-contributing home that needs to come before us. Again, that's just an idea for efficiency, cost effectiveness for the homeowner, that's why I actually did want to ask today how much it is, because I actually didn't know how much it costs a historic homeowner to come before us, so $400, I've learned today. So to me, that's a lot of money, and so if there's ways that we could be more effective, if there's not, and we need to see every single house, which I completely see the value in as well, that's fine. I just thought it would be something to be considered in terms of our process. Is there ways that we can take some of this off of the planning commission if it's very straightforward and obvious within our standards? That was my suggestion, or that's what I was referring to.
Because sometimes I've seen instances where someone comes forward and raises the issue of cost, and there has been an argument that's been advanced before, is, oh, that would be very expensive. But we don't know about those options for windows because all double-pane windows are not created equal. The value of the insulation, and this is just a very peripheral, superficial exposure I have to it, is that they're not created equal. The kind of insulation that exists in the frame itself is a big factor. So someone might come in with a, a window that they say, well, this is cost-effective. Well, it's cost-effective now.
I was saying, I actually don't care if people tell me things are cost-effective or not, because I look at the value of, or if, if they're saying it's a cost, it's a cheaper vinyl window than this vinyl window, then that doesn't really come into play for me. Does that make sense?
No.
When I was talking about cost-effectiveness, I was saying.
When I heard you raise.
We had the owner of the red house on Cedar Ravine, he actually came in with three.
Mm-hmm.
And we, that's, you know, how we determine cost-effectiveness for that particular project. For the next project, it may be different, they may be looking at three different choices.
We've done that a number of times, this adcock, ad hoc thing where someone comes in and they give you several estimates, and that's all we have. We don't even have, unlike any other hearing body that I know of, the witnesses aren't under oath. And in some cases, we had representations made that looked really fishy, like someone who comes in and says, well, I ran this by the, the history museum, and they gave me this report. And then when we heard about it, it actually wasn't written by anybody with that body, it was written by the applicant, and that wasn't represented to us at the time. So after a series of those kind of things, that was dismissed, and they start all over. So it's if their credibility was considered the second time, because it's a brand new, a new factor. But we, we don't really have any standard for, when it comes to looking at costs, what you're going to look at. In the case of Grass Valley, what council member Carter was referring to, they actually, among other things, have an inventory available for resources you can go to, because when it comes to looking for masons, who are familiar with masonry structures from the 1800s, it's much different than done now. And what I've been told is that if you use the kind of masonry work that's done now, the mortar, the building's going to fall apart, it won't work.
Like the kind of works over here.
Yes, exactly. So, so.
Well, that's not, you know, that's not really in our control, I, you know.
What, we can't provide that to our, our members of the public?
It is a concern, I, you know, we can't argue with that, but it's, it's up to the building owner to take responsibility. We cannot possibly control what people do in every aspect of a building that they own.
You mean, we can't?
All we can do is.
We can't make that kind of information that, that they make available to the public in Grass Valley, we can't make it available to people.
How much would that cost?
Photocopy machines, how much does it cost to make photocopies of something like this?
Well, again, rather than putting it on the map.
That's unrealistic, you're so flippant about this kind of stuff when she talks about cost, you're very flippant when it comes to cost. And photocopy, you're, you're making suggestions, you're not suggesting any way that you're going to contribute to it, and then you're saying, it doesn't cost anything, make a couple photocopies. I don't appreciate that. I really think you should be a little bit more thoughtful about what goes into this work and produce something rather than talk about it.
First of all, first of all, no, excuse me, excuse me.
Okay, all right, I.
No, right now to tell me that, that I, that me suggesting that, it take, you take umbrage at that, and then you're talking, me being flippant?
Yes, that's how I felt.
Oh, okay.
Okay. It is now, I'm going to adjourn our meeting at 7:56. I don't see that we are making any further progress on this particular topic.
I would ask, I did have a few closing comments, not on this topic.
I, it's reaching a non-productive level, so it is within my authority to close the conversation. And I'm sorry that we have to end on this kind of note, but hopefully we can adjourn, tempers will cool, and we can come back at a future time with productive materials that we can discuss rationally. I am loath to have two of my commissioners argue up here at the dais. So.
This being my last meeting, if I could have just a few comments, if you would indulge me.
Well, I am drawing to a close our discussion on the.
Sure.
Historic preservation, recommendation number four, systematic examination of the current standard for review, and I'll just bump up to 3.2, planning commission matters. So under that part of our agenda, I am happy to turn it over to you, Mr. Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that very much. This is, this is my last meeting. This is the end of a chapter for me, 24 years, six terms. For what it's worth, I'd like to thank the, the council, councils present and past who have thought that I brought something to the table and, and reappointed me over all of these years. It's, it's been amazing. But one of the things that's interesting is, my very first meeting on February, whatever it was, 2001, on our agenda was the In-N-Out Burger and the palm trees. And I don't know how many people remember that, but, but the prior commission had denied the use of the palm trees as part of the site plan review for the In-N-Out Burger. And mysteriously, the palm trees appeared, and so a complaint came to us, and we had to deliberate on this, and it was over the course of several meetings, and as a brand-new, more-than-wet-behind-the-ear commissioner. deliberate on this, and it was over the course of several meetings, and as a brand-new, more-than-wet-behind-the-ear commissioner, you know, I took a fairly deliberate stance on the whole thing, and my wisdom now is, I think one of the questions I would have asked and should have asked is, well, why were they denied in the first place? We took on this, you know, we took on this, this burden when somebody else had already decided that, no, it wasn't appropriate. The principle, of course, for me at the time was, well, you, the business is willing to pay a fine, yeah, we're sorry that we put them in, here's the money, and, and the principle was, well, we can't just have businesses do that, right? And Pierre was, was so wise, Pierre said, okay, well, let's, let them have the palm trees, but then we're going to lock them into a landscape maintenance agreement, or there was some kind of, I don't want to say a quid pro quo, but, so that was like my first meeting. This being my last meeting, I have to say that, that one of the things I'm absolutely most proud of in, in my time on the commission is the work, the establishment of the special committee, the work that Brian and Kirk did, and raising the awareness to the commission of what our responsibilities were that we hadn't done. I really think that this is so important, and as difficult as it can get, it's necessary, and so I, I really contrast the, the two ends of, of my tenure. I got onto commission because, well, two things. When I was driving home one night, and the big giant In-N-Out Burger Office Max sign had gone up, I went, what the heck is this? You know, gateway to Placerville, and I wasn't happy about it, and I live by the, the philosophy of get involved, the world is run by those who show up. I also wanted it to remain legal for me to change the own, my own oil on my own cars and my own driveway, and while that may seem kind of silly, on more than one occasion on this body, we've had to kind of defend private property rights, and that, that has been one of the things that, that I, it's been my bent. I generally, I generally defend the right of the individual, the right of the business. I, I just want to guard my fellow commissioners, it's so easy to want to apply, when we're up here, it's so easy to want to apply our preferences, you know, to people's projects and their ideas and their dreams, and, and it's difficult to resist. It's so easy to become intoxicated on the liquor of our own self-importance, and even though I know that, I've fallen, you know, prey to it myself, and I just, just urge you to, to be careful, and while we, we certainly represent the city, at the end of the day, the city is comprised of the people who live here, so we represent them, the city would be nothing but buildings if it weren't for the people, and so I, I've always kind of had, had that philosophy. I want to thank Kristin, you're here now, Steve Calfey, and Lois Veerkamp, and Andrew, whose last name I forget, and of course Pierre, it's just been a wonderful thing. And you know, the saddest thing, in all these years, we have not had a single hotel. We have not, we haven't had a single hotel built. I have to say this, we want Placerville to become base camp, from which we, people can come here, and from base camp can launch to all of the great things the county has to offer, but without lodging, we can't do that. I mean, the Red Hawk, because that, that's the only real hotel that's gone up in the twenty-four years since I've been here, and I know that we have some things approved, they've been on the board, but, boy, if, just encourage the city to take a proactive approach to, how can we encourage you, what incentives can we offer, because we really, really need that, so that we aren't just a pass-through. People want to come here to stay, make it the base camp, so that's all I had to say, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to share that with everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, we should have taken some time under nine point one, when we had a few more people in the audience, I think they needed to hear that, but.
I know, I, I felt bad for the applicants, and particularly since they were here a couple of weeks ago.
Those chairs aren't that uncomfortable.
Yeah.
And perhaps, maybe we'll see you sitting in one.
Oh, yeah, I, I still plan to be, I still plan to be engaged, so.
You and Pierre with popcorn.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Well, that was wise words, as I said, and with that, now, it is eight oh four, and we stand adjourned until the eighteenth of March.
So.
Good luck getting quality, quality people here.
So here's what I was going to tell you. Throughout my entire life, I've been on boards of direct.